Video's rolling. Video, so, so, okay. Just looking at it. I think our time is off here. It's 1:03 AM. Do we look good for that?
This is Arena. Pat Mord County sent me the copy of the contract that they have with Cirque in Jackson County. And so, it's very, they worked hard to make a lot of changes.
For some of the things we identified.
Um, I haven't even looked at it yet, but I'm assuming so.
Do you have to reset that every time?
No, this is a new laptop. It's on central. I don't know why it's showing 1:04 AM.
It's, it's one o'clock somewhere.
You can go in my car and turn on the navigation and it defaults to Chicago.
Hour was on at my house last night. About forty-five minutes.
I don't think we lost.
Good morning. I'll call the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order on this day, November 26th, 2019, where our mission is supporting community through quality public service. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are a couple of late entries to the agenda that were published, but I want to make note of them under the Administrator section. There'll be requests to hire for that payroll position in the Auditor's Office, number one. And number two, we need to accept a resignation in the Attorney's Office and approve a hire.
Make that D and E.
Okay.
Anything else? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we take a few minutes for public comment. All are welcome to address the County Board in any manner that would be a county concern to you. When invited to speak, please step up to our chair on the blue mat, which is placed there so that you don't trip over a little, a larger hole underneath the mat. Please state your name, your address, and the topic you're addressing, and then please sign in on the paper provided there. You may speak respectfully up to five minutes, and the public comment is limited to thirty minutes. County Board members may ask or answer a question of the speaker, but issues shall not be debated during the public comment period. At the Board's discretion, the Board may agree to schedule matters addressed during the public comment period on a current Board agenda or on a future, future Board agenda. All discussions, we ask, be respectful in nature and must be directed at the Board and not other members of the public. So whoever would like to start and step up?
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairperson Storley. My name is Mike Holfer. I live at 660 County Road 60 as a full-time resident. And I'm here mainly to listen in, but also to, to comment on a topic that I'm sure has become one of your favorite. And so, I'd like to draw your attention to the Minnesota DNR proposed border-to-border route that would utilize roads within the county in its current plan. So, my purpose for being here to comment on the proposal has the following objectives. First, to share my perspective and to share my qualifications for doing so. Second, to request that you carefully study the B2B proposal and ask challenging questions with the expectation that those behind the proposal provide clear objective evidence supporting a favorable outcome both economically and environmentally for the county. Third, to ask that in the absence of that clear evidence, supporting a positive return to the county, both long and short term, that you would vote to reject the use of county roads for the border-to-border route. So first, my perspective comes from thirty-plus years as a business leader with a major medical device manufacturer, where I was responsible for 150 million in annual product volume. These are FDA-approved blood analyzers delivered to hospitals and labs around the world. My role included responsibility for approving projects, very complex projects, allocating up to 50 million in annual capital spend, and managing several million in recurring project expense spend for improving our operating efficiency. So I have experience with oversight of complex projects. So you might ask what this has to do with planning a border-to-border OHV route. The common element is that the B2B project should follow a disciplined project management process. And in my experience, time and time again, projects pitched as being beneficial to a specific constituency, such as the B2B, but that were poorly vetted and planned without regard to the overall impact to all stakeholders in the project, end up costing money instead of providing a benefit. So there are a couple of key elements that correlate with successful project implementation in my experience, and you play a really key part in this process, specific to the B2B proposal as it relates to Cook County. So first, successful projects employ a rigorous approval process with engaged leaders and technical experts who will ask the difficult and challenging questions to ensure a sound investment choice with a positive return. Successful projects also utilize project leaders whose goals align with the good of the whole, who are expected by the project approvers to present and defend the project in an unbiased fashion that considers all stakeholders, not just their own. In reviewing the available information provided by the project proposers and sponsors, following the process that I've used with success over my career, the B2B project would be quickly rejected for lacking substantial evidence and understanding supporting a favorable overall return. The project proposal does not have an adequate management plan addressing the costs and mitigation strategies for unintended consequences once the route's in place. And I'm not the only person who feels this way. Here's a quote from a township leader, Greg Scherzer, from long-lost Lake part of Clearwater County concerning the proposed B2B. "That economic stuff," and I quote, "is meaningless to us. As far as I'm concerned, it's an empty promise," he said. In other words, what he's saying is smoke and mirrors don't cut it when proposing a project of this magnitude and potential impact. We should expect facts to be presented on the project, information substantiated with reasonable evidence before accepting this." My second objective in being here is to request that each of you carefully study the proposal and engage in leaders as asking challenging questions that get at the project proposers' understanding of the project and the risks and benefits it presents to the county, both short and long term. Once the door is open to promoting Cook County as an OHV destination, it will be difficult to close and will certainly result in costs and impacts that are not understood today by the project sponsors. So, couple examples of some questions I'd be asking if I was in your shoes. Two basic questions. First, who are the leaders and sponsors of the project? What is their experience and qualifications? Are they committed to the long-term success of the project for all constituents, or are they consultants being measured solely on getting the project to the finish line? For example, the NOHVCC's Ron Potter, also employee of Polaris, was hired by the DNR as a proposed B2B route finder. His contract expired in June 2019. He's clearly not in it for the long term. Second, very basic question that I would be asking, what is the year one through five projected increase in OHV usage of county and Forest Service roads in number of vehicles? This question is fundamental to beginning to understand the net economic benefit of the proposal, if there is one. It leads to an understanding of all other aspects regarding cost and risk. Here's a statement from the NOHVCC, partnered with the Minnesota DNR in implementing this project regarding this most basic question. "Upon implementation," and I will quote, and I quote, "we will monitor the route. Visitors using the Minnesota border-to-border touring route may generate increased traffic. The exact amount of the increase is unknown and will require monitoring once the route's in place." This quote from their website illustrates a complete lack of understanding and planning for what might come, and there is more to come. There are other more specific questions that should be asked related to youth restrictions, vehicle standards, enforcement, impact on other initiatives such as the One Watershed One Plan, but I won't go into that here.
Thank you. If you have anything you'd like to copy off and give to us later, you can.
All right. I have--
And you could sign in too.
I will do. I have a hard copy of my comments and also would like to remind you that there is a viable alternative that takes nothing away from the county or its residents who can currently use those roads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
From what I'm reading, the administrative form of government seems to be the route that we are heading towards, and so I'd like to address that with you. This is in some of the materials that you sent out. It talks about under the county administrative plan, the Administrator is the head of the county for the management of the county affairs placed in the Administrator's charge. What awesome power you are placing in one person's hands. And if we do not watch what is being done, that person will step in and do what they want to do. My challenge there is to say, are you really sure this is the way that you want to have the county run? Under previous administrations, did you ever ask yourself, how do we stop what's happening? How do we regain control? What avenues are you leaving open for yourselves, for us, for the county? AMC says they continue to support flexibility in counties in the administration and delivery of services. I'd ask that that flexibility extend to the length of time that this person is on probation. Both citizens and the community use this time to evaluate how this person fits us. We should not have to worry about if we fit that person's ideas, but do they fit who we are and where we are going? We're not talking about hiring somebody who already lives and works in Cook County, I'm As you form your interview team, I wish that you would consider including an employee of the county, someone that can bring that process home to the rank and file. When you're talking about--
Employees are included.
As an actual person on the interview team?
They'll be part, they'll be working with a consultant, and they were part of the process the last two times.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I remember being part of an interview team way back when, and we were one, I was one of fifteen, and it was the most awesome responsibility and the best thing that I could think of for the county. After all, this person works for us, and we are the us, and we are the future. This person is walking in with absolutely nothing, no responsibility here, just wherever they want to go. They're making three times, four times, five times the salary of most of the people in this community at fifty-plus dollars an hour, and our little peons are out there working for ten and fifteen, so please consider the team and give yourselves some room for evaluating this person as we forge ahead with him. Don't cut yourself short. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alice.
Anyone else wish to step up? Okay, thank you all. This morning at 9:30, we're going to have a public hearing, but in the meantime, we'll keep moving along with our given agenda. Before we do that, you know, sometimes we go through resolutions weeks, months previous, and then we never bring it to the public or to ourselves again. And I just want to make a few statements about our, or some thoughts on Speak Our Peace Civility that we adopted back in October. I think I'm bringing that up because it's Thanksgiving week, and not in my family, but I know a lot of families have, shall we say, interesting discussions during the Thanksgiving dinner. And in reviewing our resolution in October, I think we as a board should be more aware of just how we perceive, how we are perceived by the public, and at various times, we need to refresh ourselves on how we conduct ourselves, and which reflects out to the broader community. So today, I've picked the one out of nine. There's nine different assets to Speak Your Peace, and I picked agreeable. Agreeable is defined as looking for opportunities to agree, and when we look for opportunities to agree, we don't always want to contradict, but we want to listen to what folks are saying. So I'm not asking for any of our comments here at the Board. I'm just throwing that out as part of our Speak Your Peace Civility projects that we adopted. And with Thanksgiving coming, I know sometimes when we have heated discussions, it may be a good time for us to step back and realize how much we have put forth with our own resolution in speaking our peace. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything? Otherwise, a motion to approve as a whole.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to land services, Mr. Nelson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have just a couple items for you, one of which has been coming for a little while. And that is a request to go ahead and add a position, another position of the Assistant Recycling Center worker up at the recycling center. This is, if you've read the report, we had, we had achieved a staff of up to four workers back in the nineties when we had about 500 tons' worth of materials processing through the facility. Since then, over the last twenty-plus years, we've increased to over 1,100 tons and have not increased the staff on any kind of permanent scale. We had benefited from the use of sentenced-to-service crews and volunteers and such to get us through over the last years, since we've not been able to have access to sentenced-to-service crew. Really felt the impact of that loss of staffing for us. We kind of switched over to seasonal temp hirings and have actually kind of used that to the point where it's really demonstrated more so the need for us to go ahead and hire a full-time person so that we would not have to hire temporary staff on a seasonal basis. One of the things that we found with the recycling business, though, the redemption values of the materials, they ebb and flow with China recently getting out of recycling material redemption values that we get on the commodities that we take and recycle and send to market, goes up and goes down and at all fluctuates. But what hasn't fluctuated is the amount of materials that continually comes into the facility on an increasing basis. And so, basically, the request is to go ahead and add a full-time position. And essentially, from an economic standpoint, it almost already pays for itself because we have been paying for temporary seasonal employees almost on a year-round basis anyway. So it is kind of flush in terms of the budget. This has been included in next year's budget for us, and so I respectfully submit that request to you.
Okay, thank you. Occasionally, I have a question of where does all the recycling go?
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, it goes to a variety of places. All of ours, and unfortunately, because we, even though for us and for the staff size that we have and the facility that we have, it is a lot of materials, in a market-wide basis, it is not a lot of materials. The, our economies of scale and the amount of materials doesn't allow us to really dictate and move the market such. We have to kind of go where the market is. And right now, since I've been in the position, we have moved to three different kind of generalized regional markets, and right now, we are working with Hartels out of Proctor, Minnesota. We get basically the best price. They take all of the materials, and it is one of those things where they, you know, they take all of the materials, so we might not get as good a price on the better stuff, but they take the bad stuff as well. And so, it's kind of a full-service deal for us, and it's much, much better than the previous vendor that we had been using through Superior, Wisconsin. So, right now, all of our materials go to Hartels, and then from there, they accumulate all the rest of the materials from the northeast region and then ship it out to other markets from that standpoint.
Okay, well, thank you on that. Questions or comments?
Thank you for, you know, making this request and meeting the county's needs. Do you have any, are there any other options we have down the road, or do you, I mean, I'm assuming there's going to be more growth. Is it just a matter of more people, or are there more efficient processes or machines? I know other counties are talking about kind of keeping more things in-house, and maybe it's speaking to the better and lesser materials. I don't, I don't really know the ins and outs, but just looking for the longer term here, too.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills, that's a really good question. We have to kind of continually look at the recycling as, as we go in terms of some, in some years, some materials really yield a good price, and we get a really good benefit off of an easier process that we do, and sometimes it switches the other way. For a while, we had to actually eliminate green glass. We couldn't take that in. There was no market for it. Magazines had stockpiled for a couple of years before we could finally get it, but we still took them in because we didn't want to take it. One of the demands that we, we hear on a pretty consistent basis is that we want to be able to recycle as many different types of materials as we possibly can, and we want to try to accommodate that as much as possible. One of our limitations that we have is the size of the facility is kind of small. We have no storage capacity, so to speak. That facility was expanded a little bit more than 20, 25 years ago to the size that it is. We would have to really take another good, hard look if we were to do any kind of further expansion, but basically, our storage capacity, if you notice, primarily in the summer, is actually outside in stacking of the bales of those types of materials that, that can be stacked outside. So, we do kind of continually evaluate in terms, and I, and I talk with the, with the regional markets quite a bit, and we have a, an organization, the Northern Counties, no, not the Northern Counties, but the Northeast Regional Waste Commission that we meet in Duluth with all the rest of the counties, that we basically get together and we talk about the markets and the regional markets, and if there's anything that we could benefit from, from a regional standpoint. And we're all kind of stuck in the same kind of pattern right now. I did, the very first county that I was with, we had a, what's called an upfront separation process, where basically, all of it was thrown together. We have a source, what's called source separated, where people individually bring in, and they, they bring us already pre-sorted materials and stack them into the place. That is where we get the best price from. Other counties will have a single source where it comes in all at once, and then they use people in separating processes to pull those apart. That is the least efficient, so--
In-house, they do that?
I'm sorry?
Within the organization?
Within the organization, yeah. So you can go through more materials, and you can get more materials, but you're going to get a far lesser redemption value because of the contamination that's in there. We have about some of the best material in terms of redemption value because of the lowest amount of contamination because it comes in source separated. And even with an additional person, and with the markets that the way that they are right now, the request for us is to have it even more pure in terms of the lack of contamination. So to go to a different type of route or a single sort really wouldn't, wouldn't benefit us.
So it sounds kind of like storage is, would be the next, the next step on the horizon down the road, is that?
That's right, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills. I don't believe at this point we would really be able to look at adding any other types of materials to, to do because of just the space that we have in the facility and the types of machinery that we need to process those types of materials. So storage is one thing, but we do, we move them fairly frequently, and we have the remote trailers that are spread out across the county. And we do spend a fair amount of time actually trying to keep those clean and the materials in those, in the best condition that we can as they come in.
Well, and one of the reasons I'm asking is I'm just looking for a way for us to, as a county, to insulate ourselves from external forces of market stuff, so.
Do you want to put that bubble over?
Yep. Would that help?
The difficult thing really is the end market, is trying to find an end market. I mean, we could, if we could find enough storage and be able to get in, you know, the best, best redemption value type of materials and hold on to that, we might be able to get a better price negotiating it out. But where that leaves us is that then we would have a more difficult time in getting rid of the lesser type of values in materials that people still want to recycle. They still want to recycle as many different types of plastic as possible, where right now, only ones and twos are the only ones that are getting any kind of redemption value off of it. So there's, there's many types of materials that can be recycled, that we can't recycle right now just because of logistics and because of the, the regional and end markets aren't doing it, like the, the wax drinking cups, like the milk cartons and such like that. There's a lot of different types of materials that could possibly be, but we just cannot do them right now.
Interesting, for sure. Any other comments, questions?
That explanation was helpful. You answered some of my questions. Thank you.
If nothing else, then--
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the addition of a recycling assistant starting January 6th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Okay, thank you. And this next item, it's a, it's a little bit complex, but, but it's not. Basically, we have the One Watershed One Plan initiative, and that was one, we were a pilot project some years ago, so in, within and around the state, we are-- a pilot project some years ago. So in, within and around the state, we are one of the leaders in our area in terms of getting into this type of watershed-based planning and projects that we have. And I'm sitting here as one of four different individual entities that are wrapped up into this initiative. We have Cook County Land Services, we have Lake County Environmental Services, Cook County Soil and Water Conservation District, and Lake County Soil and Water Conservation District. We've all worked together in with this One Watershed, One Plan to formulate kind of a work plan and submit for funding opportunities to kind of continue some of the projects that we've been working on. And much to our delight, we were actually awarded a pretty substantial amount of funds, approximately $600,000, which is spread out into four different, those four different entities. And we, just by virtue of the nature of the types of governance that we have, we felt that it was better to go ahead and split those projects into the two like entities. So Lake and Cook County Land Services and Environmental Services would work together, and the Cook and Lake Soil and Water Conservation Districts would work together in terms of the management of the fundings. They, the state requires fiscal agents to be utilized in this. And so Cook County Soil and Water Conservation District went ahead and volunteered to be the fiscal agent for the SWCD's portion of the grant funding. And then Lake County then alternatively volunteered to be the fiscal agent for the Cook and Lake kind of planning and zoning or land services projects, all geared towards our, the county projects are geared towards the septic, septic compliance inventory and upgrades of the septic systems to protect groundwater. And the soil and waters looking at stormwater and other types of planning projects that they have identified in the work plan that you should have before you. So basically, we're at the point right now where we needed to identify who the fiscal agents were going to be and to get authorization from the boards, each of the boards, all four of them, to go ahead and accept the funds and to do, there's a resolution in your packet to basically identify who the fiscal agents were going to be and then to authorize the signature. There's going to be a meeting on December the 6th coming up. And we wanted Commissioner DuKirk is the representative that we have of the commissioners from Cook County to be able to go be a signature to that type of funding. And as I indicated, in our level of projects, we had for many years, had done the Lake Shore Septic Compliance Program. We accumulated a large inventory of systems that we know are non-compliant. They're failing. They're failing to protect groundwater. And we want to kind of further that initiative to bring those, all those systems up into compliance so that we can go ahead and start inventorying probably on a little slower basis. We ended up kind of outpacing ourselves with the inventories and the logistics that we have. So we wanted to kind of approach this in the ability to kind of correct that backlog of systems that we have so that we can go ahead and move forward. Lake County is going to be focused more on the inventory portion of that at this particular time. So at this time, I guess I'll just open it up for any questions.
Okay, thank you. It's a huge project, but it's well-funded, which is great.
Yes.
And to Elena and all of the folks there who've done work in the past and going to move forward, it's great to have the cooperation among both of you entities. Any questions or comments? Mr. Mills?
Can you speak a little bit just to how the backlog is affecting property owners in Cook County?
Well, there's, there actually is, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills. There's basically a statewide issue that we've been running into right now in terms of septic designers, installers, and all of that, kind of the old folks retiring out of the business and not a lot of younger ones coming in to replace them. So when we went through, we basically started in the year 2000, 2001, and we would identify a lake. And we'd say, everybody on this particular lake needs to have their septic system inspected because basically we wanted everybody on the same kind of playing field. And we wanted to put whatever limited resources that we have in the most efficient way to protect the environment to the most sensitive areas of the county. So we would focus on those lakes. And we would do the inventory and then basically give everybody the two years to get their systems upgraded and then go on to the next lake. And we just kind of kept going. And we ended up having some of those people in the systems of lakes that we had passed by, or not passed by, but done all the inspections, and then went on to other lakes, not really get their systems updated. And so there's a lot of the issues that we heard from property owners is that they have tried to get septic contractors but have failed to been able to do so because of the few numbers that we do have and the amount of systems that are out there that need to be corrected. One of the thoughts that we are looking at and floating around is that we possibly can look at individualized areas. So if we have a particular area on a lake where people want to get together and they want to hire somebody that maybe we don't have enough capacity in this county to be able to do it, we may be able to mobilize or bring somebody up from St. Louis County or someplace to come and actually perform that work. We wouldn't pay for the systems, but we could pay for possibly mobilization costs and have it as a more effective and efficient method to get those systems done. It's a lot more efficient for a septic installer to be able to work in a specific geographic area in a consolidated effort than it is to be working in all of the different parts of the county. So in that sense, we suspended that septic compliance program a number of years ago. It's maybe four or five years ago or so. In order for us to be able to clear that backlog out, there are actually state-required triggers. So in shoreline areas, any permit of any kind that's requested from the county requires a septic inspection anyway. So even though we've suspended that program, we still get new systems that are added into that hopper. And so we want to be able to clear that out so that we can be able to deal with them as they come.
So the backlog is largely due to lack of contractors as well as?
Lack of willingness to participate.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills, we do, and we do want to prioritize those properties. There are some properties with whom have never responded. And we want, you know, there's certainly different approaches for different ones. We are certainly focused on a voluntary approach, and we will absolutely work with the property owners to facilitate matching up the contractors with the property owners. But there are some of those properties that are out there that have not been willing to update or have not even communicated with us. And those we want to focus on in more of a different way, by virtue of means of the county attorney's office.
And I guess my last question is, do you feel like you have enough resources in your office to, I mean, this is going to help, obviously, but to take care of that and to continue forward? Is this, the structure is in place, but we need a little boost? Is that long and short of it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills, this actually helps significantly. I mean, a lot more so than if we weren't able to get this funding. So we did request and has, have as a part of this funding, you know, a few tens of thousands to go ahead and increase staff maybe on a seasonal basis to assist Mitch. We have one septic person, Mitch Eversen, is our environmental health specialist. And so we can get him assistance in that on a seasonal basis. That would be funded through that money. So yes, we are quite hopeful in that respect.
Great.
Any other comments or questions?
Good news. Thanks for your work on it, everyone else that was involved.
We ready for a motion?
I move.
I'll second that.
So the motion has been made in a second that we approve the proposed FY 2020 Lake Superior North watershed work plan and funding.
And then, Madam Chair, to designate Commissioner DuKirk as a signature.
And we will designate Commissioner Hadi DuKirk to sign the agreement on behalf of Cook County.
Yeah, they were all ready to sign at the last meeting, and I said, that's not how it works in Cook County.
Okay, so we have the motion in a second. Any further questions or comments?
When did they come up with the agreement to split it four ways? Was that after our last north shore management party?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Deschamps, that was, it's been a, kind of an ongoing discussion that's been, yeah, certainly part of the north shore management plan or group that's together, but also in discussions with Bowser and with ARDC and with a lot of Lake County and Cook County, this SWCD discussions going buffer. There was a lot of it. The state, the state would rather there only be, you know, one channel through all of this and then one person, one entity. It's cleaner for them, but it's, it makes a little bit more sense to have it the way that it is structured. And so, yeah, there was a lot of voices in that kind of helped to bring it to this point.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Tim.
Moving on to auditor. No items? Okay. You're there in case.
Next week, yeah.
Next week, okay, good. Administrator Rena?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The first item that I have for you this morning is the renewal of our highway engineer contract, which, as you know, is a, basically a shared services contract with Lake County. We've been doing that not quite two years. And I think as a peer, Kristin Foster's, I would say she's delightful to work with. And I think she's done a good job for the county. So I think this has been a good, a good working relationship with Lake County, and it's met our needs. And I hope that you will renew this contract. Just a few high points in this contract is, we made two main changes in it. One, we've added supervisory responsibilities to Kristin's role. And I think that's a, that's a good change. Before, in the transition, Jeff Cadwell was doing supervisory stuff while Kristin kind of adjusted. But I think she's got a lot of respect from the department members, and I think she'd do a good job as supervisor. And she wants that responsibility. The other thing is, we've eliminated from her responsibilities, the agriculture inspector. And we're moving that around in the organization. We'll hear more about that at a different time. The costs have been adjusted from the previous contract. So nearly two years later, there's an increase of $7,182 over the last contract, which is a 6.2% increase, which largely reflects changes in her salary that we have to participate halfway in her benefits. Other things were adjusted down, some for mileage and some other things. So also included in your board packets this morning was, was a letter from Kristin to the commissioners. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, but if it's okay, I'd like to read it for the, for the public. She says, Dear Commissioners and community members, thank you for the opportunity to work with Cook County and your highway department team for the past two years. I believe we accomplished many goals by working together. With the support of the Board of Commissioners, Cook County received $2,498,000 in state and federal transportation funding grants towards replacing one of the Flute River, Reed River bridges in 2023, constructing the safe routes to School Trail in 2021, and a federally supported priority to consider for 2024. We started long-awaited improvements to South Shore Drive, finished the Kasha 17 project in Grand Portage, and replaced the Ski Hill Bridge that carries Kasha 5 traffic. While we continue to work on a long-term Cook County transportation plan that includes projects such as County Road 45 improvements, resurfacing sections of the Gunflint Trail, and reconstructing Fifth Avenue West. I know that we may face some new and maybe unexpected challenges during the next few years, but I'm confident that we can successfully navigate them thanks to the experience and commitment of your highway department employees. It would be my privilege to continue to serve north shore communities and work with all of you in this capacity for the foreseeable future. Sincerely, Kristin Foster.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. I would just like to mention that Bobby and I are on a team with a couple of commissioners from Lake County as well as the administrators that meet periodically to review how things are going. And so it's a two-way conversation. And we would continue to do that as well to provide a little bit of oversight from the standpoint of doing it together.
Could you have your hand up first?
No.
I'd just like to commend Kristin. She has two very different counties that she works for and two very different county boards that she works for. And she's been able to navigate that. And I can't imagine that that's been easy. So, good job, Kristin.
Commissioner Deschamps?
Yeah, me and Myron are on the board with the Lake County Commissioners. And I was at Transportation Alliance with Commissioner Gudermont a couple of weeks ago, and we discussed how it was going for both of the counties there. And Kristin's a great asset for Cook County. There are, I was glad when she came on to that, I put forward the County Road 17 project, a road that hasn't been touched in 50 years by Cook County. And Cook County collected money on it for 50 years. And she was willing to step up to the plate and put that road right on the top of the list. And for that, I thank her, my community thanks her. And I'd like to make the motion to renew her contract.
Support.
She also came in, I've got a bridge in my community that's a rustic bridge, and the previous designs on it were not anything near rustic. And she came in and talked to my community and reassured them that she would do the best that she could to make it safe, sound, and as close to historical as she could.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, I was, I was not knowing anything skeptical coming in and sharing an engineer. But now, having been here and hearing all the positive feedback, both from constituents and just from peers, I think we can, we can all take a lesson from her communication style as well and just bringing things forward. I think she's done excellent work, so. Thank you, Kristin.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second to approve the renewal of the shared highway engineer service agreements with Kristin Foster. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Kristin. Welcome aboard another two years. Okay.
All right. So the next item is a follow-up from last week's committee of the whole work session where we had a good discussion about how to move forward with administration in Cook County, what form of administrator, administration we wanted to move forward with. At that time, the board was in agreement. And I had asked that, you know, if you wanted to continue that discussion this morning, but to affirm it in more of a vote, since we don't take action during work sessions. So that's what the next item is. I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, we did. And that was recorded, so you could look on the meeting last week that we did have a lengthy discussion about three different forms of government. And it seemed like right from the beginning, there was agreement that we want to continue with an administrative form. The administrator is not the head of it. We are, as a board. The administrator works with us. And we will, in our future, working with administrators when they come in, for now, I won't speak for 50 years, but for now, we are working with a very good consulting firm. And together, we will be meeting with the consultant in another couple of weeks. And they will meet with us individually, and they will meet with the department heads. To begin this process, we also the department heads. To begin this process, we also met with department heads and with employees specifically on our own to find out where do we want to go, where do you want to go. So we've had input from basically all of the, who wanted to do this, county employees. So I feel we can move forward with a lot of confidence in this and continuing our administrative form of county government. Any other thoughts or comments on this topic?
Yes, I think just to add to, to your suggestions, we've been going through this process sometime and, and I think the public should know that, or be reminded that we went through a performance review process and received feedback from the Commissioners as well as department heads and, and that those discussions, we had two closed sessions on that, was very helpful, I think, in coming to the point where we need an administrative form of government and somewhat, you know, more information about what the expectations are.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Any further questions or comments?
You know, I don't think we have any other position in the county where we put this much investment into whether or not we want to keep it, so I feel like we've done a thorough job.
So we have a motion and a second to affirm the continuation of administrative form of government for Cook County. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I know that we're getting close to the time for the public hearing. We got about 10 minutes, but maybe I can get through these things. I want to give you a quick update on the capital projects, where we're at with those. We were hoping yesterday to do a walkthrough, to do a final punch list at the Hovland Garage. There's still some plumbing work being finished up up there, so we have scheduled the walkthrough for next Friday instead. So we're hoping everything will be complete by then and we can do the final punch list so that we know where we're at and, you know, that our Highway Department can start moving into that building. This afternoon, I'm going to participate with, with Diane Booth to do a walkthrough with the contractor at the warming house and we're going to also do a final walkthrough on that and create a punch list of remaining items. So that building obviously is very near being done. It's just some cleanup work left in there and a few, few smaller items. So those are two big capital projects that have been certainly on the books for a long time, for the last year and a half, year, year and a half? I don't know.
Yeah.
Warming House has been in process for over seven years.
Okay, and since about before I was born, these projects, no. So, so those are all good news and hopefully the next time we meet, I'll have some, some final things to say about those. That would be great. The, the other thing I wanted to highlight was last week, at your approval, we had, CRBPS came in with a contractor and, and did some work at the Y. And I think it was the first week I was sitting in this chair, Brady and Molly and I came in and asked for approval to move ahead with these corrective actions. We found that in that building that the, there were significant really air gaps in the ceiling, so it's like blowing warm, moist air out of that nadatorium because it was never properly sealed when they constructed it. You could actually go up on the roof and I did go up on the roof with the contractors and there were places where you could actually feel the air, it would like blow your hair if it was coming out of there. I can't speak to how those things happened because none of you were here or whatever then, but, but it's, it, it wasn't good. The other piece was we wanted to get control of the air handling system to reduce the pressure in there so it wasn't blowing that air all through the rest of the Y. It's causing a lot of the mold and corrosion issues that have created a lot of headaches for our maintenance and custodial staff and plus added up, you know, costs, not just recently, but certainly future deterioration of the building. They found out that the air handler is actually wired incorrectly and half of it was not even working. So they got almost right away, control of the air flow in there and the, the result was fantastic. If, if you've had a chance to be in there, the temperature and the humidity's down in the nadatorium, it's, it's able to be controlled now, both by the school and by us. And the, the locker rooms as a result of this change are not walls sweating and, you know, things rusting while, while you watch and the, and the nightmares that went along with that. The, the contractors were incredibly good. They worked within budget, within the time they said, and even had a little extra time and so while they had the lifts in there, went and changed bulbs for Brian in those lights up high because they had the lifts in there and they could do that. So I'm very optimistic about these changes that you, that you approved to move ahead with. And one of the things I think that, and we're going to monitor this and I'll report back every couple of months on it, I'm really quite sure that it's going to have a dramatic impact on utility costs because we've been blowing warm air when it's 20 below zero right outside. So it may be that we will see most of the money spent recouped fairly rapidly as a result of that and we'll monitor that and.
Vicente, thank you, and then?
Any questions about that at all? If you haven't been over there and just seen and felt the changes, it's really pretty dramatic.
It's called value engineering. That's what happens.
I think too, just caution people that there is an improvement. I was up there yesterday, I'm the rep in the county, working with the Y and, and they're still fine tuning with Johnson Controls and, and seeing how more effective they can make it, but it seems to be making a difference.
So, really quickly, the last couple of items, I think we have time for them. I'm going to ask Pamela Dixon to come up and do the items that we added.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Morning, Pam.
Morning.
First item is to ask your approval to hire Kay Burkett as a new deputy auditor, taxation specialist, and payroll technician. Kay comes to us with over 10 years' experience in accounting, payroll, and has the additional perk of having city government experience in the town of Tofti. So she comes with great depth as well as breadth to step into this role. We're asking to remain at grade 140 for classification, starting her at step five, which would be $23.48 per hour.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, I would like Commissioners to affirm the resignation of Carolina Mitchell, who is the Attorney's Office Assistant. And with your permission, I'd like to read her letter of resignation, please. Dear Ms. Hickon, please accept this letter as notice of my resignation from my position as office administrator. My last day of employment will be December 19th, 2019. My spouse has taken an Army assignment in Norfolk, Virginia, requiring our family to relocate for a period of one year. Although it is a temporary relocation, our family has experienced being apart for long periods of time due to multiple Army deployments and after careful consideration, I realize that given the opportunity, it is best for our family to remain together. It has been my pleasure working for you and being a part of the County Attorney's Office. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to support the very rewarding duty of public service. Our office touches so many lives in this community that every part of our daily task has in a way a ripple effect in the general well-being of Cook County. Not only do I leave this position having gained experience and a different perspective of the judicial system, but I leave this position enriched on a personal level with friendships and memories that I will take forever in my heart. Thank you for nurturing a culture of respect, self-care, and camaraderie in the workplace. That made my time as a county employee very enjoyable. If possible, I would like to help transition my duties of office administrator so things at the office continue to function as smoothly as possible after my departure. I wish you and this office all the best. Thank you again for this opportunity and for being so understanding and supportive of military family and life. Sincerely, Carolina Mitchell. With that affirmation of resignation, we would also ask for approval to advertise and post this position.
Motion to accept resignation with regrets, but we understand why and support that as Molly does. And also to post.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, too.
Thank you, Pam.
We have, looks like, two minutes.
Two minutes, why?
That was such a nice letter.
I know.
They're keeping their house here.
Well, that's good.
They hope to come back.
We'll have to add a position, Katie.
That'd be great.
So Molly?
Yeah.
So, I'll just have a little sentence before.
Oh, for the public hearing?
So then, is anyone from Public Health going to present anything?
I would just, you can go and ask them.
There's graces right there.
It seems like there are a lot of people here for that, so you may want to see.
First with Alice.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could ask, well, here's how I would do it, I think. I would get.
We need to close this meeting.
Right. You don't necessarily need to, I mean, yes, I guess you could.
Okay, okay.
You could. The important part is that you open the public hearing, so everyone knows that this would be their opportunity to submit the tobacco ordinance. So here's what I would do. I would ask for a show of hands and say who wishes to speak before the board today, including this lady.
Including this staff.
And then, you weigh how much time you think it's going to take. If there's enough time, I would ask that Alice and her staff can come forward first to provide information and then you take comments. It seems like there are probably, there are representatives here from the school and from other agencies and entities, so they might all wish to speak. I wish that we could just, I wish I had enough staff that we could just leave this position open for a whole year and take her back.
I know, you know, I mean, I, so I'm like really attached to my staff.
Yeah.
Time to spend with them.
Yeah, I bet. I bet.
Whoa, we were.
Thanks.
Two minutes. We have a good team and a lot of good energy and, we still do, but I'm a little.
All right, Jenny.
Right.
So at this time, I'm going to close our regular board meeting and I'm going to open the public hearing in regards to the tobacco ordinance. In October, we had a presentation by the Public Health and Human Services in terms of understanding how that's affecting the folks in our county. We also had background from the American Lung Association and so on October 22nd, we initiated the process of a final draft and to set the date, which is now today. I would ask that, starting off with the general public, if you would have comments, please come forward to the table and then after all of the comments then, as board members, we can have comments too. So I, I see we have a representative from a variety of public, from law enforcement and public school and the clinic and public health and probably concerned citizens also, maybe some moms and dads, I don't know, but. So I'm opening it up for anyone who would like to come forth and, and state your concern or comment.
Do I need to sign in for this part?
You can state your name.
Okay. Hi, my name is Andrea Orest and I have to apologize because my left ear isn't working, so I don't know how loud I'm talking. Too loud, not loud enough, let me know. So I'm presently the ship coordinator for Cook County, but my discussion, I guess, is purely on a personal basis. I started smoking cigarettes when I was 14 and granted, that was over 15 years ago. Times were different, but the thing that allowed me to smoke cigarettes was that I had older friends who purchased them for me. And I know that increasing the age to 21 is not going to prevent everyone from smoking, is not going to stop the people who are smoking, who are teenagers, but I firmly believe that that age gap, as a 14-year-old, I didn't have friends who were 21. When I was 17, I had friends who were 21. So I suppose, you know, there still will be people who get through those cracks, but at 14, I didn't have friends who were 21. So had I not started smoking at 14, I might not still smoke today. I still, at 40 years old, know that smoking is bad. I don't want my kids to smoke. I don't want any kids to smoke, but I smoke because at 14, my brain processes grew addicted to nicotine. I became addicted to alcohol, really close to addicted to other drugs and I feel like if at 14, I didn't start smoking, I might be a lot healthier today. I could have taken different avenues in my life and I wouldn't smoke. I know it's bad. Everybody knows it's bad, but, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
So I support increasing that gap between 14-year-olds and the people who are old enough to buy cigarettes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Mike Carlson and I have an opposite point of view. I'm a person who has never smoked, but have strongly opposed smoking for over 50 years. I have sometimes asked smokers if they prefer heart attacks, stroke, emphysema, cancer, or even just premature wrinkles, unfortunately likely with little effect. There was a long-running ad in the Minneapolis papers that said simply, "Don't smoke, live, Ching Johnson." It was an ad for a gentleman who actually ran a construction business, but it impressed me a great deal. The message also was related to the horrid coughing of my parents who smoked and both later suffered severe strokes that were likely related. If we can help stop some young impressionable people from this addicting substance, this change in Cook County tobacco sales should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mitch Gore, I'm here as a community member, as a father, and as a, as a representative of the school. I don't think I'll take the time to just read my letter. I did not prepare a statement as I kind of wanted to come across as a little more authentic than that. But I'm here, you know, I have, I have four kids in our building and I can say that over 22 years of education, I have taught myself how to not bring things home so that when I go home to family, I can be present. It's taken me a long time to get to that point in my career. That started to change now with the, with the increase. with the increase, um, of vaping in our building. It is a battle that in the building, in the school building, we are losing. And I am, I'm not ashamed to admit that, um, that's a reality. And we have kids as young as fifth graders doing this within our building. They can do it almost in an invisible nature. This is, uh, one example of a mechanism to vape and these pods are filled with anything from a fruit juice substance to a nicotine concentration to THC. And we've seen all of those things within the building, all of those varying concentration and strength. We have students that will buy various chemicals or strengths of nicotine online or, wherever, and then they will fill these and then the kids will wear these in their socks. And so you imagine how popular I am when I ask somebody to show me their socks. It's a great day in the building. But this is daily, okay? This isn't, this isn't like we read about in the newspaper, this is daily. Um, as I've stated in my letter, my colleagues in Silver Bay and Two Harbors have all had the unfortunate pleasure of calling ambulance and hauling a kid out of the building because of the adverse reactions to substances they don't know are in this. I also, um, acknowledge the fact that you have a difficult situation or or a decision to make based on, um, the freedoms that we all enjoy as Americans. And I also know that if, if the city weren't on board and they don't make a move, I also understand that this is just one step in the process. I do understand that. We do now currently have 18-year-olds who purchase these things on a weekly basis, bring them into our building and move them within our building. I would love to say that we're winning this thing and we're not. Um, it's largely invisible. You know in the boys' bathroom smells better than it did before kids went in it that we have an issue. It's very difficult to police. You can't exactly put monitors in locker rooms and in bathrooms. I would suggest to you that we have a higher usage than the national norm here in Cook County due to our isolated nature. I could be wrong, um, but from the stats that I've seen, I would venture to guess because of the limits that our, our kids sometimes have in the social nature, um, that we have an increased use. And so as a, as a parent of four kids and as a community member and as, um, the school did pass a resolution, uh, the school board did with a unanimous vote in, um, favor of Tobacco 21, I'm definitely in favor of it and I would ask you to just carefully consider this issue. And I welcome, uh, any questions at any times, whether that's, uh, a phone call, email, or discussion on what we see at school because it's a very difficult task and, um, one that all principals in the state are getting together and, um, deliberating about at this time. So. Thank you very much for the time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for this.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Tim, Tim Kennedy. Yeah, I'm here because I support, uh, the county adopting this ordinance. I think it's the right thing to do. We all know the harms and dangers of tobacco and, um, vaping products. You know, the information is out there. I don't think there's any question about what it does and what, uh, what it's targeting, uh, young people. I would say that, uh, you know, county board should also support this, uh, and as a city council member, I can tell you that if the county passes this ordinance, I would be one of the first to bring this to the county, uh, city council to also follow up with, uh, city ordinance. I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Pardon?
Um, it's not my intent to make a formal comment in support of this policy change. I feel like, uh, from the standpoint of public health, we've had plenty of opportunity via our, our advisor, Public Health and Human Services Advisory Committee, presentations to our Public Health and Human Services Board, with the American Lung Association and sharing information from the Public Health Law Center to, um, to give you information about, um, the opportunities with policy change. However, I did want to bring to your attention the latest local data on youth vaping use in Cook County. Recently, the 2019 Minnesota Student Survey results came out and I wanted to share that and make it a part of the record as well this morning. That vaping, uh, youth, vaping amongst youth is increasing in Cook County, especially amongst our youngest students who are included in the survey. Uh, amongst eighth graders, in 2016, just 4% reported using vaping products at any time in the last 30 days. In 2019, that number increased to 36%. Also, uh, new in the 2019 survey was a question asking students how they are obtaining these products. 92% of eighth graders report that they're receiving it from friends, 100% of ninth graders and 90% of 11th graders.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so I'll open up for the board members to have, what you've heard.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I just, um, I'm not sure we've made it clear that, um, other than members of the public, if there is anyone. Are, would you like to invite any other agency representatives to speak if they wish to?
I certainly would. I'd open it up for everyone. Hopefully you understood that was the invitation. For any agencies or anyone else?
Good morning. Um, my name is Taylor Blakeman. I'm a health specialist at the American Lung Association. I'm here today to urge you to adopt Tobacco 21, an ordinance that would raise the minimum legal sales age of all tobacco and nicotine products from the age of 18 to 21. Thus far, over 500 localities in 18 states in the U.S. have passed this policy, as well as 54 localities in Minnesota. For years, adolescent smoking rates have been coming down, although now, however, adolescents' use of e-cigarettes, nicotine vapor devices, hookahs and small cigars have gone up dramatically, threatening to completely erase a decade of progress. According to the recent 2019 Minnesota Student Survey, about 1 in 4 11th graders are using e-cigarettes. During the years from ages 18 to 21, youthful experimentation often accelerates into daily use. It's a time when the adolescent brain is highly vulnerable to the effects of a powerful addictive, addictive agent like nicotine. In fact, the brain is still growing until the age of 25, so exposure during this period may result in permanent neurological receptor changes that lead to a lifetime of nicotine, um, habit and resulting illness. Raising the tobacco age also better protects younger teens, as we have already heard today, as most of those who provide tobacco products to kids under 18 are themselves under 21. The power of tobacco lobbyists have been known to derail initiatives in Congress and state legislature, but where federal and state governance fails, um, local leadership has succeeded. Virtually all statewide workplace and public smoking bans also began with local government regulations. Now more than ever, it is time to move towards a smoke-free generation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other representative from an agency? Okay, thank you all. So, board members, comments, um, from you? Do we, do we need to close the public hearing? Or, yes, I think we need to close.
I can, uh, I'll just use this opportunity to educate, as I like to do, but, um, you, whenever you're hearing testimony or anything that goes into the record for what you should consider when you make your decision, um, that you would, uh, hear that in the public comment period of the public hearing. I would make one final call to make sure nobody else wants to submit any testimony and then I would close the public hearing and open it up for discussion among the board, so that any action you take, any discussion related to that action would occur during your regular board meeting.
Okay, one last call for any other public comment. Otherwise, I will be closing the public comment period and be reopening our board meeting.
Thank you.
Now. We've had a couple of public hearings and it's like, there's always a procedure, but it seems like it's always new for the next one that we do, so. Anyway, comments, questions, what do you think between us? I appreciate all people's comments. Um, I received, um, some comments verbally, a concern about our young people in our, um, county. And I think, um, that, um, it's something that is, that was pointed out by, um, Mr. Dorr, that it is nationwide, the federal government wanted, did decide to move ahead, now they haven't. Statewide, countywide, we're the ones that need to do it.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Support.
Any other comments or questions on this?
Um, did we get any change, uh, in the, in the, um, the drafts regarding, um, the compliance checks? Are there any further concerns there? Sheriff Elias, and I don't know if if you've got any, any comment there, if there's concerns at all about the compliance checks, that was one of the issues brought up, but. Thank you. Sorry for putting you on the spot.
Members of the board, so, um, as far as compliance checks goes, um, we will conduct them in establishments, obviously in the county. When and if the city passes their ordinance to, to, uh, collaborate with this ordinance, we will, uh, then do the same thing for the city. And we used to do this in the entire county before, for underage sales, and so we, we have a, a protocol for doing it and we will continue doing that.
Thank you. Yeah, that, I guess my, my question concern was about the, almost doing a double check because there's the, the two different ages, 18, you know.
The, uh, the compliance checks were for sales, you know, and, uh, so we would still do that in the city, even if the ordinance doesn't cover the city, but the age obviously would be 18. And the, the compliance checks for the county would be, would be 21.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to comment that I really appreciate, uh, Councilor Kennedy coming and, and, uh, speaking about his willingness to take initiative to bring it to the city council because it's very important. I know our chamber has some concern about that, that if, if we don't have everyone on the same page, you got unequal, uh, opportunities for commercial advantage. And, uh, even though that's not the most important issue, it still is an issue that I think should be mentioned. And it was mentioned in their, their resolution and recommendation to us.
Just like the warming house and the roof on the courthouse and the windows in law enforcement and County Road 17, this has been a very long process to get to this point and a lot of work put in it. It was something that Joni worked on before she retired. So Grace, thank you very much for picking this up and making it a priority.
How many, um, stores does this affect if the city doesn't pass there?
I think it's 14.
In the county? Uh, the thing that got me on this was, um, it seems like we were going after the people that were vaping or the young kids that were vaping, you know, Mitch brought that up. This kind of triggered the whole thing and, um, as far as the smoking thing, you know, we all know that the vaping thing is bad. You, there's a lot of information out there that isn't being shared on why these kids are getting sick and I believe it's vitamin E that they're smoking in these, or that's going through these vape things. That's triggering something in the, there, but I, I have a hard time with, with, uh, government overreach. You know, we can, we have several young kids in the community right now that I know that are 18-years-old. Some of them aren't even graduating yet that have signed up for the military. You know, they're leaving very shortly for basic training. They're putting their, their life on the line for the freedoms we have and they're 18-years-old, but they can buy pack cigarettes. And, uh, that's just, you know, I support, support this in some ways and in some ways I don't, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my, my, my comment after hearing the public hearing and, and, um, more or less, hearing about this, as soon as I took the role as Commissioner, um, in the last three joint powers meetings, this has been a topic brought up, uh, so concern amongst our, you know, powers in our, in our community. And, and my impression from those meetings is, you know, wondering where the state is on this and, and, and then hearing some from the state asking where our local leaders are on it and it's just kind of, we're kind of passing the ball around and so, you know, I, I want to really thank our county staff and, and our commissioners for, um, taking this on and having a hard discussion. I certainly recognize the, the trade-off with, with personal freedoms. But, um, you know, and I've said this before as well, the thing that really hooked me on this issue was how the, the brain chemistry works at an early age and how the brain develops because there is no personal choice. If a kid gets hooked, it's, that's a, that's a chemical wiring in the brain and, um, and, and that's not fair either. And so, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's not an easy, uh, thing to ta, tell a military, um, personnel, um, that you can die for your country, but you can't smoke a cigarette, but nor can they drink beer, so. Um, you know, there's just, where are, where are all those lines and, and, um, and how do we make those decisions? And I think for our community's health and for our children's health, that this is a really smart move. So thank you for, for considering it.
Any other comments? So we have an motion and a second to support the Cook County ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Tim.
No pressure, Tim.
Okay, so we'll move on to, are you talking about the?
Yeah.
Moving on to Dave, who has a applicant for the, um, Grand Marie Library Board.
And, um, well, I'll let, I'll let things settle here. Yeah, please. So this is, um, we, we have a vacancy, uh, uh, as you read in our packet, that Gwenda Enfolds, um, can be leaving the library board. She, she said at our, at our meeting last night, it is not because she doesn't like libraries. It's just because of her time, um, which I, I can. It's just because of her time, which I can respect certainly. And we have an excellent applicant for the open seat. This is Chris McPherson, and if you had a chance to look at her application, and, you know, it was a little, in our format, it got a little jumbled up, but I did get a letter, and more or less a resume from Chris. That was very impressive, and I don't know if you have any questions for her, but she just wanted to show her face and say hello, and I thought that was a great idea, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome to say whatever you like there to introduce yourself.
I'm Chris McPherson. I started going to public libraries when I was a little kid, and I've been going ever since, as many of you have as well. I'm interested in the issues facing libraries. I've been interested in them for a very long time, and so I'm excited to be able to apply that interest on the public library side of things, rather than the academic library side of things. And I like to be involved with my community, and this is a way I feel like I could actually contribute substantively. So, I appreciate the opportunity and hope that it will meet with your needs as well. I have one correction to my application. I was all excited about libraries, and so I wrote down the Wolfridge Environmental Library Center. It is a learning center, not a library center, so we all know Wolfridge.
Right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
I too went to the library as soon as I could write my name, so I appreciate your enthusiasm for our great library here.
Yes.
Questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have served on a board with her, so I know that she can be a good steward of the board that she sits on, so you're very lucky, Dave.
Library board's very excited, too, I'd also add.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Welcome aboard.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to things we've been doing, and activities, and meetings, Nothing too exciting there? Okay. You're thinking.
Yeah, no, I, no, I guess I have nothing, nothing heard of at the moment right now.
Okay.
Hold my tongue for once.
Meeting updates. I have a note here, just to remind people and ourselves, that on December 17, that is the Public Health and Human Service Day, so we need to have those folks come, because I'm sure Allison would have some things to present. So, we will do that at 8:30, and then the board meeting will follow after that.
No, it's right here in the notes. Madam Chair, number four says that the public health board meeting's at 10:30.
This is not accurate.
So, which way are we going?
The way I announced, 8:30, the way she announced it. I didn't notice that this was not accurate. But good catch, Commissioner DuKirk. Thank you.
That's why I call it update.
Either way, we'll be here at 8:30, no matter who shows up.
That's right.
I believe that the public health representatives that aren't on this board, that was the time they could come, it's 8:30. So, I think we started this way, and there was a late-minute change. So, thanks for catching that.
Yes, we do need to catch up.
We should probably change that online for people that look.
Right.
Okay. The last I heard from Allison, it was at 1:00, it was 10:30.
That's why we update. We'll check with Allison.
I'll text her.
Okay. Any other updates while we're on the topic? Meetings to note, then.
I'll just announce the first one, Madam Chair, that tomorrow, we have a committee that regularly meets monthly, the Public Safety and Transportation Committee, and we've been announcing that that will probably have three commissioners, and so there'll be a quorum there tomorrow. So, the public will be able to attend. It's here in the commissioner's room at 9:00 AM, and there will be a presentation by the DNR, giving an update on border-to-border project. It's a presentation, it's not an opportunity for public comment, it's a presentation for that committee, but the public would be invited to attend. If they want to.
Is that a Skype? Andrew will be Skyping in from the DNR.
It'll be a Skype. I was a little concerned about the weather tomorrow.
But he's Skyping.
More concerned about Kristen getting here.
Right.
She will.
Hopefully, be able to get through.
November 21, I have a confirmation from Allison that Jerry and Carla are available at 10:30 for the public health meeting. That's the last update I have from Allison as the chair of the Public Health and Human Services Board.
Okay, well, we'll get that sorted out.
We'll put it front and center on the website, what it's going to be. We'll put a media release on that.
And we'll have it sorted out by the next board meeting, too, next week. Okay, let's see, the rest of the reminders are later. No, we have Truth or Taxation next week on the 5th, at 6 o'clock here in the commissioner room. Any other meetings to note? Anything else that I'm missing?
I've just been hearing, you know, the tax statements or the, you know, notifications are out, and so I've been getting feedback there. Not a lot of grief at this point. Some increases, some decreases. Increases have been due to someone building a house, so there you go. So, it's just been, just, you know, first time in this role, getting that kind of feedback, so.
Yeah, and that's primarily due to that increase in the valuation.
Yes.
About 7.8%.
Yep.
So, if you haven't had an increase in your valuation, you're likely to have a small decrease this year.
Even when we had 0% levies, we had public comment that didn't like it.
Really?
We have very engaged citizens that like to come talk to us.
Okay.
Expect people to be here.
So, that's next week on the 5th, at 6:00 PM, and then a little bit further out, we have our Association of Minnesota Counties Annual Conference on December 9 through the 11th, which most or all of us will be attending. Anything else? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Thank you.
Thank you.